It's slight, but it minimizes progress. And the interventions that we had for this year, we have three classes of gateways. We have IA pull-out, which is instructional aid, pull-out, IA push-in, kinder-teacher pull-out, accelerated math that started in February unfortunately, after-school intervention, computer lab time for all grades, we have a computer lab scheduled. And we just recently were lucky enough to have our 75 new Chromebooks arrive on campus. And so those are available now for the S-Back testing and after S-Back testing they will be available for students. And so that's a huge plus. And the, one of our labs was unfortunately in shambles because of the computers. So fortunately, the sixth grade gave up their class computers, so now one of our labs has their desktops. So that's nice. So, and we have two classes of System 44 intervention. Okay? And a small step forward is that our staff is increasing their use of complete sentences for the English learners, of course, so the more use of language instruction as students are practicing their language instruction practice, that is of course excellent use of students...I need to stop saying "I'm an English learner," so that unfortunately is not appropriate, but let's see. Complete sentences is appropriate for English learners. And giving students increasingly difficult sentence structures in upper grades has been excellent practice for students using K-Concella practices, systematic practice for students, English learners in the upper grades is excellent practice for them. And teachers are definitely planning for instruction in that manner in the upper grades. Okay? And as we move forward for planning for the 2015-2016 school year, parents will be receiving a survey as they did last year, and that will be analyzed through school site council, through PIT, through leadership. And of course, we will move forward as we put that into the school site plan. We have about one or two more school site council meetings that will need to be planned so that that data can be put into the school site plan so that next year's planning could be taken care of and so that the next year's principal could strategically have that ready to go. Okay? Thank you so much. Any questions? Questions?
Questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Now, you're welcome. Dr. Lucy. Roosevelt School, would like to welcome Linda Barreda, site principal.
Easy. It's weekend.
I have to share a story I had told my four and six-year-old Saturday night that mommy wants to sleep in, do not wake me up, take care of yourself. And I got a text from Terry Ryan, but that's okay, Terry, thank you. That was Terry who woke me up. But, and thank you, Terry, and Darren, who were there at 1:00 in the morning onsite taking care of business. I really appreciate what you do, what you've done this school year for Roosevelt. Hello, I'm Linda Barreda, and I am proud to say that I am back at Roosevelt where I did my K through six in the eighties. So it's very endearing to be the principal, and that's a message that we've been giving our students is, I did my K through six year, great there, and that's something that I would like our students to come back as teacher, vice principal, and principal. So today, we're talking about CELT. Let me get the clicker ready. I'm kind of short, so focus this. All right. So, we're here presenting CELT information, and something that I do also want to acknowledge is our ELRT Cindy Griffin, who is involved with all things CELT. Sylvia Mora is her aide. Of course, they in charge of the CELT testers, getting the classroom ready, communicating with our teachers. It's a collaborative effort, and it would not be possible to assess 432 students without our personnel. They're not here tonight, but I know that they're appreciated. All right. So we took CELT this past fall. 432 students were assessed. We pulled this data from ORS. AMAO1 was our target criteria of 69%, and AMAO1 measures a growth from one year to the next. Roosevelt's percentage of meeting AMAO1 was 49.6%. Nice figure, but not close enough. AMAO2 measures the percentage of students who have reached proficiency or advanced in all subtests. Our target was 50.9%. Roosevelt's percentage ended up being 30.7%. Neither AMAO was met, however, we did recognize 19 of our students who reclassified and were part of that AMAO2 percentage. We still have CELT highlights. We do have successes to celebrate. 177 students grew one CELT lever or more, and that's in the testing department in our school district. That's who, the students who we call gainers. That means they gained, they ate points and they went up. 149 students remained the same, in the same CELT level, so those are called our stickers because they got stuck in the same level. 76 students are in the early advanced or advanced levels. First grade did meet AMAO1, 66% was the goal. 66% met the goal was 60.5%, excuse me. And fourth grade met AMAO2 with 30.5%. The goal was 24.2%. And so those AMAO2 students who have been here just than five years. So this is our focus. Focus is on Tier One, and that's the daily instruction during the classroom. So something that, you know, where we definitely would like our teachers focusing on is on having clear lesson objectives and having the students be aware of what their learning is going to be. The use of GLAT strategies, to be used in all content areas, and GLAT strategies, it's great teaching strategies on how to acquire language, written language frames and sentence frames, paragraph frames, and an opportunity for all students to read, write, speak, and listen throughout the day with Common Core here and having the focus on closed reading, argumentative writing, and student collaboration, I think those things are a must. ELD to happen daily, uninterrupted, strategic, and consistent. We were fortunate to get, order class sets of Chromebooks in fourth through sixth grade, so we do want to use technology to enhance our student learning. We are, we just sent six teachers to Cabe, and those six teachers, half of them were here today. It's gotten late in the evening and they've gone home, but they just came back so motivated and, you know, started using their instructional strategies as soon as they arrived, and that motivation is still going strong, so I'm really excited with that cohort that got to attend. On April 30th, we are sending 20 parents and parent professionals to the Cabe workshop here in Monterey, so we're running along with that professional development for our staff and our parents. And of course, continuing our data meetings and sharing this information with staff as well as our students, because we do need to hold our students accountable for their own learning as well and helping in that endeavor. On top of the daily instruction, we do have a safety net with our Tier Two interventions. So K first, we have our ILF, Individual Learning Folder, which happens every day. Currently, we have a Saturday Academy being taught by a first-grade teacher for kinder with a focus on phonics and phonemic awareness. First and second grade, Imagine Learning, which focuses on vocabulary development. For our second and third graders, we have Phonics for Reading with 46 students in each group, also happening daily. Third grade, we have two classrooms of System 44. Fifth and sixth graders are participating in gateways. We also have a success maker starting at 7:00 in the morning to give more instructional time for our students struggling. And then we have a homework center, which we have partnered with the city libraries, and that happens every day after school for all kinder through sixth grades. We have about 45 students in there, so it's going strong. So we definitely have our work cut out for us at Roosevelt. Parents are very aware of the importance of having our students reclassify and transition. We were very fortunate to be invited by Washington Middle School. There was a lot of our principals and sixth-grade teachers there and had that vertical articulation, and it was very clear that we needed to reclassify our students before they leave sixth grade so they're not stuck in remedial programs at the middle school and are able to take electives. That was it. Thank you. If there's any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your presentation and also the way you delivered it.
Sure.
Mr. President, I have two very brief items.
You want a break?
Very brief. The first is the quarterly report for Williams.
Yes.
And we had no complaints filed with either textbooks, future vacancy or misassignment, or facilities. This is the quarterly report that I bring to you. All right. The next item, we also have a yearly monitoring by the Monterey County Office of Education.
We heard good ideas.
And I wanted to share with you that we're doing it good for you, and I wanted to thank Pam Cassidy, who is our certified technician, for doing such a good job to make sure that everyone is properly credentialed.
Thank you very much. Very much. Good.
Next item, we've got the business category. This is the reopening of Beronda Elementary School.
Well, the question you asked me to bring some options, what are we doing with Beronda, Old Beronda School? So this is an informational item that we're bringing to you some, three options, what people will be doing. Next meeting, you will have to make a decision which way to proceed. Jerry Stratten, what?
Thank you very much, Dr. Lucy, President Garcia, trustees, my peers, and members of the audience who are still here and still away. I will be brief. As Dr. Lucy said, we were asked to evaluate options, present them to you for consideration. As we did that, we massaged some of the options, and there are some similarities, and then we'll come back later with a recommendation after listening to anything else you want changed or removed. So, the parameters where we looked at three options. In your packet, you have detailed numbers and detailed words that address those, so I'll just recap some of that, and for the public that didn't have it all, we will address that. This is a Beronda site plan, and let me get the right pointer here. Front of the school here, which we're going to spiffy up, we now have a significant MCOE presence. We're going to take them out of this area, and they're in transition to MCOE. In the meantime, they're going to be over in this area, so we'll continue to get some rent from them. And our presence is looked to be here and here, and you'll see that in subsequent maps depending on the option we choose. So, all three options for consideration and discussion tonight include a presence of special needs, and that's the first bullet under each option, so if you read it once, then you don't need to read it again. Basically, it looks at relocating two AM, PM special needs in pre-K, SEC classes from Loma Vista and Lincoln School. And what that does is it gives us extra space at those schools for our grade span adjustment, X-class size reduction. And that's important, because we continue to grow and we continue to reduce class sizes in K through three. The rest of option one is to defer any decision of what we want Old Beronda to look like until August of 2016 for the new superintendent to analyze where he or she thinks we should go based on board guidance. Option two and option three have some similarities. Let me see if I can get this pointer to work right. That's option one, first of all, with the special needs relocation from Loma Vista and Lincoln. Option two provides for a TK, a pre-K, a TK, and three kinder dual immersion classes, a total of five classes in addition to the special needs classes that are relocating there. We have a staffing model for that, and you can see in your packet the cost of staffing. It's notable that Mary Pritchett would be the school principal for the first two years in both option two and option three. For option two, the total estimated cost is about 1.1 million. That includes a significant facilities renovation package that you approved on January 26. Again, option two would have us locating the school, the pre-K, TK, and the three dual immersion kinder classes in the old section of the school, and we would take the special needs classes and relocate them until they last, and the newest portables here that have been cleared out, and they're modernized, air conditioning works, lights work, and they're in good shape. Option three takes a bit of a different approach. Again, remember, the special needs relocation is the same in options one, two, and three, so we don't need to address that again in detail. We add one more class, and hence the cost is a little bit more in option three, but instead of, instead of a concentrated dual immersion presence, we take a pre-K, TK, kinder, and then one, two, three. The kinder class would be dual immersion along with the pre-kinder, but the first, second, and third grade classes would be a voluntary relocation to the Beronda Community School, and we would anticipate that some folks who live in that area would prefer to take their children there rather than continue to bus or deliver them to Beronda Meadows. An advantage of this is that it does avail some class rooms at first, second, third grade level for community members. The disadvantage is, is it doesn't create a concentrated kinder dual immersion presence or a dual immersion academy or a, what we call the magnet school. And I'll address in closing comments what the magnet might mean. We do have a significant demand right now for increased dual immersion classes. Cost is going to be a bit more, about 70,000 more, and that's for the additional teacher. Now, those costs that we have in options two and three include secretary, they include librarian, they include custodial, they include the whole package that we would be able to open the school, run the school. We are confident that we can take facilities requirements and have them ready in August should you elect option two, option three, or some combination of those or something similar. So the facilities issue would not be something that we couldn't accomplish to be able to occupy this, this late summer for the next school year. We talked about option two and three difference in going with a concentrated dual immersion with three kinder versus a kinder in one, two, three. We take a look at what we can do with that magnet school option. And again, this will be up to the board, but we picked a couple of topics that we could address as part of that. Number one, dual immersion can be multicultural, multilingual. We take a look at STEM training and the NASA program, and there are obvious marriages there that are very conducive to increasing the learning experience. The NASA programs at Hartnell, so a marriage would be between Beronda Community School and Hartnell for the NASA program. We also have the Hartnell Center that has all the scientific options. We look at additional STEM training and where are most of the good jobs going to be in the United States in the next 25 or 30 years? Science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We additionally want to look at enrichment programs, and that would include the performing arts. So what I think we visualize at this point, waiting for your guidance and community input, would be a hybrid magnet school of dual immersion with a significant tie to STEM and NASA and a performing arts component for enrichment. So that's food for thought today. If you have any questions that we have to address them?
Do we have any questions? Yeah, Ms. Barnes?
Just have one quick question. Where, where do we get the money to pay for this?
Good question. We've already allocated, based on the approval in January, we have funds for the facilities portion of that, which is half or more. Some of the, some of the funds are actually relocating from other sites, so the additional dollars we see there, there's an offset of money that we would save. For example, the special needs classes move and they go away, they come, the money would come with it, so the net difference is going to be far less than the 1.1 million dollars. We do have some additional costs though, and within the budget with some money that we expect from the May revise, because the California taxes are way up, we're well ahead of the projection, we firmly believe that we'll have enough money for the net difference and in keeping the MCOE classes there for their rental income to be able to fund this for the first two years.
Will the audience have a question?
Thank you very much. Questions for the bullet?
I'm curious if you wanted it earlier for Daisy, but the demographics, the demographics got to be met at the dual immersion?
The ideal demographics are 50/50 or a third to a third, and I would have to defer to our personnel director, who has taken the assessment of the demand for dual immersion in the next year. What we have as a legitimate demand, we know we have enough, three classes or more of that, is the demographic such that it would support that, a third, 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 or a half that?
I think that the request that we have for interim intra-district agreements would probably support that. You'll need to look at those more closely along with Mary Pritchett and look at the language levels of the students.
And I would add one thing to that. Once the decision is made when we move forward, we would expect some significant increase in community interest. That's John.
The five classes, are they all special day classes? Are they all students that are SC, ESD students? Or is it something they count? I mean...
There are classes not counting the classes.
There are, all classes there.
The, okay, we get done. Hang on.
I can see them in purple.
The purple, yeah.
And each, each of three options, I believe, were all five classes there in each of the options?
They're all the same in all three of them.
All the same, okay.
And that would, so that happens here regardless.
Okay.
And that unloads other schools where we can then have some rope in smaller class classes.
Will there still be any special day classes at any other school site? Are they all concentrated here?
These are at the preschool level, or preschool, preschool.
Okay, the preschool.
Yes.
Okay, they're all preschool.
Yeah. So there will still be SD class throughout the district if that agrees then.
Okay. And we're moving from Loma Vista and Lincoln only, those preschool classes. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item are action items. Mr. Spence, thank you very much. Appreciate your information. And then Dr. John Cruz, you've got a presentation on...
Is it still my turn? He isn't. I know he was waiting at the door, but I'm just curious. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you very much for the process.
Sure.
And I understand it's a fair process, it's an open process, at the same time, it's very respectful that you're here, and at the same time, we have a board that is very unique in the sense that they're working together again and again and again.
Well said. Well, we're at that critical juncture in the process. We've completed our first big responsibility, and that's developing a leadership profile. And I want to publicly thank the board and staff, including certified and classified parents, community people, who were very, very open within regards to what they were looking for in the next year. So I appreciate all the excellent input and the provided, and hopefully, you know, I've captured the major themes of that three-day interview process in this leadership profile. So, let's begin. Let's begin.
The right-hand side of the show.
Oh, it's either right, right side? Ah, okay, there we go. I wanted to share this with you because this leadership profile is based on the involvement participation result. And as you can see, participation was very significant in terms of total members and also very representative of this community, because you had very turnout from parents, teachers, and said community, classified administrative board members, and you see the totals there along the right-hand column. This, as I said, was probably one of the more significant interview periods I have had in any, any district. I mean, it was like tough to get out of this building at times because people wanted to talk, and so I respect that, and hopefully I honor that. This does not include the conference call, which I had with members of the BBB. We had a conference call last week. I was in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and they found me. All kidding aside, we had a nice conversation in regards to their expectations, and I think their expectations are pretty well captured in the leadership profile that we have developed. I just want to go through each section and just share for you what was developed in regards to the data, and this is through professional experience and preparation. District-level experience is required, and I don't mean district-level experience just in Salinas Elementary School District, I mean district-level experience in any district, superintendent experience preferred. Bilingual, bilingual competency in Spanish and English is preferred. Site-level administrative experience is required, elementary principal experience preferred. Teaching experience required, teaching experience at the elementary level preferred. A master's degree in administrative credentials required, a doctorate preferred, and experience in a multicultural school environment preferred. Now, this, this section is really critical, because the whole idea of this section is to try and capture what the community is looking for in the next superintendent, but not being so restrictive, if you know what I mean, so that you eliminate a lot of people who could potentially be outstanding candidates. So the whole idea here is to capture a lot of the essential requirements that people are looking for, but not to be so restrictive that you wanted to pull. Okay. Personal characteristics, has high integrity, and is honest, sincere, transparent, fair, trustworthy, treats others with dignity and respect, is approachable, accessible, and possesses exceptional listening skills with parents, staff, students, and the board, has excellent communication skills, and relates to people at all levels, is sensitive to the needs and concerns of staff, parents, and community members, establishes clear systems to address staff and parent concerns, is a team builder, recognizes the abilities, contributions of all staff, parents, and community members and the board, and can unify the board, staff, and community towards the attainment of a common vision. Okay, personal characteristics continued. Engages with school and community groups and local community colleges and universities to enhance achievement and improve the quality of life for the greater school community. Is visible and enjoys interacting with students, staff, and parents. Creates a district climate of cooperation and collaboration with students, staff, parents, and the board. Is a decisive leader, who makes sound, difficult decisions in the best interest of students, holds firm, and follows through. And in concluding with personal characteristics, has a high level of energy, enthusiasm, and motivation, with a strong work ethic and highly professional demeanor, leads by example to improve district morale. Is sensitive and responsive to the overall educational needs of multicultural school community. Okay. Professional skills and abilities. Has a broad understanding of curriculum and instruction, personnel, finance, and facilities. Recognizes the importance of selecting highly qualified staff and developing their potential through a consistent and thorough evaluation system. Has a commitment to academic excellence and a clear vision for education that maintains a focus on improving student performance for all students through collaboration with and input from staff, board, and parents. Is a visionary leader who can articulate high expectations, gain buy-in and support, and successfully implement programs through a collaborative approach with staff, parents, and the board. Professional skills and abilities continued. Is a strong curriculum leader with high curricular expectations, understands how to prioritize and to move a district forward with common core standards, LCAP, LCFF, dual immersion, special education, and extended programs for accelerated learners. Recognizes the importance of 21st century technology and the fine arts in enhancing student achievement. Has knowledge and understanding of effective instructional programs that enhance learning for EL and homeless leaders. Works effectively with parents, staff, board, and community, groups to create a positive district climate. In concluding, possesses the ability to sign responsibility, delegate authority, and hold people accountable for results, and enjoys working in a multicultural school community, values education, and cherishes the unique learning environment the Salinas City Elementary School District provides for students. So...
Do you have the mic?
I do have the mic.
Yes.
I do. And as I said, I think everything that folks have shared, regardless of the group, whether they're teachers, administrators, classified staff, members of the community, I think all of those really critical ideals and characteristics are characterized in this leadership profile. And so, I would allow you to have whatever discussion you would like to have, but ultimately, I would like you to approve this, because I'd like... I would like you to approve this because I'd like this to go on our website tomorrow so that we can begin the advertising process.
Very good, very good. First of all, we may have some questions up here before we answer those.
Sure.
Understood. Do we have board members yet?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you because you really did encapsulate what people have been saying and the people that came in and talked to you, et cetera, including the board. So thank you for, for the summary.
You're welcome. Mr. Hoffman?
Well, yes, this embodies pretty much what I have heard from the community, from the teachers, from the parents that I've talked to. So I, it's just pretty much what I would be looking for.
That's good, very good. Anybody else? No? I'm going to be calling this for a vote, motion and a vote. Yeah, first of all, thank you, pardon. I'm James. I want to see, be able to have the community have a question or concern which has not been presented so far. Something new, you know, you're doing the same thing, but also gives a good chance to listen to other opinions or suggestions. Okay? So you have two people behind you that are jumping up and down. So we'll take the one in front first. Please identify yourself with the board and take that as a person.
Oscar Ramos, the SETC.
Excuse me, and I want to underscore that something has not been presented so far.
It's a clarification. So, Dr. Isn, the participation results, to take a picture. Under teachers and admin, there's seven, seven, but they're in white as opposed to the other numbers that are in black. To that, what is that? Why is that white rather than...
Technologically deficient.
Now, so the second question is, you have parents, teachers, community, classified admin, and board. The SETC executive board also met with you. Are we included in, in any of these?
You know, when I met with the group, I didn't take into account everybody in my mind. When I met with the group, it was a teacher association group, and I counted it as one, one interview.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, please.
Fred Garden, two children in the district, Bishop Park. So I wouldn't have to jump up and down if you would just provide public comment after each item, so.
Wow.
I just want to say that. So in any event, I want to thank Dr. Cruz for meeting with BBB. We spent about an hour talking to him. The document that I presented to you earlier during the open comment period, I'm not sure if you're going to read it, so I wanted to just put on the record and take a moment. What came out of the community meeting on March 29th is very much aligned with the presentation that we just heard today, but I think it's important that you consider five criteria. This was voted on in a very democratic way during the March 29th community meeting. Number one, the number one criteria that our community said needs to be done by our board, or needs to be adhered to by our board. What are the qualities that we want to see in a new superintendent? Number one, must be hired from outside the district to avoid familiarity with politics. I think there's been a perception recently by this board and by community members of this board that there's a lot of political allegiances that go on, so the motivation there for that criteria is, of course, so that we have somebody who's, who has fresh ideas and is not aligned with any specific groups or motivations. Number two, the person must recognize that teachers are on the front lines and should be listened to regarding district needs and priorities. We believe that as well. The teachers are on the front lines, they should be listened to. Must be able to motivate and function as a peace builder. We did see that criteria. Must be willing to establish a presence at school sites by actively supervising principals and staff and by engaging parents and students. So this is just as simple as coming out to the school sites and actually being visible and talking to parents about their concerns. And must be, finally, must be willing to treat all students and programs equally. As I said, on March 29th, the community forum, it was put together by BBB and a collaborative effort with this teachers' union. And also, we want to thank the Lincoln PTO for supporting us so that we could use the facility because we just needed a location at the end of the day. Teachers who attended the meeting, they're very hopeful. They expressed a lot of gratitude for engaging in a dialogue. I think what I was, what I was able to take away from it personally was to understand some of the things, the different perspectives that people may see that I don't see. So that discussion is healthy, and we want you to encourage that in our community because there's so much divisiveness right now. So the more often we can get together and see eye to eye on these things, then it's just, at the end of the day, it makes more, for a healthier atmosphere here at our school board, and it unites the school district for one common cause. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you very much. Dr. Cruz? Any comment or lecture or summary?
No, as I said, you know, Frank and several members and I had a discussion for close to an hour, and I appreciated that. You know, I just want you to know, I shared that letter with the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was very transparent, so they've, they've had it for a week, and they've had the opportunity to review that, so I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Good. Okay, Ms. Barnes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the leadership profile criteria.
Second, there's a motion on the table in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Say none? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Say none for the record. Dr. Cruz, could you summarize and sort of bring it together?
I would, I would really like this. You know, I, I'm gonna...
We appreciate your service.
She was not back, but I, I want to talk to everybody in the room. I asked the board for the opportunity to make a comment at this juncture because I feel it's, it's really critical that I do that. You know, getting an outstanding superintendent is going to be tough work. It's going to be tough work, and I need your help. Now, I'm not addressing this specifically to everybody in this room. You're here, a number of you representing various groups, so, you know, please take that as, as kind of my message to the entire Salinas Elementary School District. But it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, and it's going to take a lot of hard work. Because with all due respect, and you know what, I'm going to make this comment and I'm going to walk out the door, but it needs to be said, is that I see a lot of this. I do. I was a superintendent for 16 years. I've seen more of this in the last two months that I've been here than I ever experienced as a superintendent. And why is that, why is that observation critical? Because I can guarantee you, any candidate that's worked their way, they're, they're going to come to a board meeting. They are. They're going to walk in, they're going to sit in the back, and, and they're, they're going to watch. And I guarantee you, unless this district puts this and does this, and starts coming together, starts using board meetings to, to be businesslike, to be professional, and to agree to disagree, and set your differences apart for now, if a candidate doesn't see that, guess what? We can't pay them enough money to want to come here. So I'm speaking to you from my heart and saying, try over the next two or three months to recognize that there are differences, but I tell you what, a new superintendent who is worth his or her weight and goal is going to come here and is going to help the healing process. But that's never going to happen if you're sitting here pounding each other at each board meeting. You know, I have this adage that I love. You know what? You can pound that nail so much that you're going to start damaging the wood, that you're starting to damage the wood.
Bravo, bravo.
And you know what? I, thank you, but I don't need a bravo. What I need is for you folks to, to really take this message out and say, you know what? Let's just agree to disagree. That's it. Let's kind of then understanding. I mean, do we need to tape every board meeting? You know, those are kinds of things that candidates come and they look at. And, and I'm so dedicated to trying to get you an outstanding leader because you know what, your, your teachers, your principals, your frontline people, and obviously your kids, they deserve that. And so I'm asking you, you know, I can walk out of here and you can say, oh, you know, Dr. Cruz, he's full of belonging. That's fine. I did that for 16 years, and I've taken every shot that there is to take. So I, I understand that. All I'm asking is that if we're going to get a great leader here, Salinas Elementary School District has got to start coming together. You've got to start for now, for, you know, instead of wanting to get your piece of flesh, you know, just sit back, let the process take its place. I think we have an outstanding process. One of the things that the board and I discussed is having a community advisory committee that is going to work in conjunction with the board during this selection process. Now, we don't have any details, you know, they're, they're going to be discussing that and deciding, deciding how they want that to look, because that's really their responsibility, it's not mine. But there would be an opportunity for, for representatives of key groups in the district to help advise the board in terms of the selection process. And that's something that I know they are very committed to. So we're going to try and be as transparent as possible in trying, trying to get more people involved, but I need your help. I need your help. We can't pay them enough. Can't put enough on, on the docket to get them to come here if all they do is see people just beating each other up every board meeting. So I said my piece, I asked the board to please give me the time to do that because I really want, you know, I, I watch your kids, you know, I talk to your parents, and they want the best for your, for their kids. They really do. And it starts with an outstanding leader, and I think you know that. So please, help me out. Thank you. And I hope you all get home with a decent hour.
Thank you. We will be going into the next item. The next item is California Day of the Teacher.
Yes, we have a resolution here for your action, California Day of the Teacher. We would like the board to approve the following resolution, 2014-15-12, California Day of the Teacher, May 13, 2015, whereas teachers person of five, our societies believe that universal public education is key to meeting the challenges of the changing world, and whereas teachers strive to make every classroom an exciting environment with, where productive and useful learning can take place, and each student is encouraged to grow and develop, and whereas teachers reach out to foster the well-being of each student regardless of ability, social or economic background, race, or ethnicity origin, or religion, and whereas teachers motivate individual students to find new directions in life and reach high level of achievement. Now therefore, be it resolved that Salinas City Elementary School District Governing Board of Education does hereby urge all citizens and schools to observe May 13, 2015, as California Day of the Teacher by taking time to remember and salute the teachers who mold and educate our children, impact and enrich our lives, and thereby are critical to the constant transformation of our society. The Board of Education takes the following action on its resolution.
Give me the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Resolution 2014 slash 15 dash 12.
Second. I'm going to have roll call.
Second.
Yes. The motion is second, and I'm going to call roll call. Okay, start my line.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Larissa?
Yes.
Ms. Barr?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution Number 2014 dash 15-13, and this is Classified School Employee Week.
May 17, 23rd, 2015, whereas the legislature of the state of California has declared that the third full week of each May shall be Classified School Employee Week, a time to recognize the many contributions of classified school employees to public education, and whereas classified school employees have served the state of California and its children for many generations and have played an important role in the furtherance of the goals of public education, and whereas classified school employees deserve rightful recognition and public celebration for their caring, their deeds, and the incalculable contributions they have made to California's public education system. Now therefore, it is resolved that Salinas City Elementary School District Governing Board of Education does hereby encourage all citizens of Salinas to observe Classified School Employee Week during the time of... acknowledge the achievements of... 2015 as an opportunity to... and contributions of classified school employees to our school district.
Can I make a motion? We accept the resolution. I second. And there's a second? Who was it?
Larissa.
Okay. Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Larissa?
Yes.
Row call, vote again.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Larissa?
Yes.
Ms. Barr?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Okay. Next item is comment four, comment for math adoption, adoption. This is recommendation for action.
Well, at this time, we would like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Education, Ms. Laurie Sanders. She is in charge of education, therefore, the district is moving for, after so many years of adoptions, and we're beginning the adoption for instructional materials with math this year. The wish art will come hopefully soon, in less than two years, we hope, maybe next year, but you will see, the adoption is very important because the curriculum, the standards of the entire nation have changed, and without diminishing the significance, high dollars are needed. But Laurie Sanders, please.
Superintendent, board members, cabinet, audience, teachers, I'm again here at the end of the night. I'll talk fast. I'm sorry there aren't more teachers here, and I'm really sorry that there aren't many, many teachers who participated in the initial review of materials. Were here earlier, and of course, they left, and they could have also added to help you understand the process that we went through. I worked with Carol Rodriguez and SETC to establish a process where the teachers selected representatives from K through first, third through fifth, and sixth grade from every school site. Carol set me the names, and then we met, and we used an adoption toolkit tool that was developed by the California County Superintendent's Educational Services Association Curriculum and Instruction Steering Committee, and that's available on the CDE website. And so they selected programs to send forth at the K through five span, or T-K actually, and then the sixth grade span, and those were sent forward to sites, and they were on display for parents and teachers since the 10th of March?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, sorry. A week later, okay? So... Left, right?